Clerk, can you read the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. President, Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Here.
Counselor Matouski.
Here.
Counselor McInnes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
And President Delasola.
Here.
You have ten members, President, one absent.
Stand, please, and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we get going to stay standing, we lost a few members of the city today. John McCarthy passed away, our ex-mayor, a few days ago, and Anthony Fajoni passed away sudden today, in a moment of silence. All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it?
Mr. President, we have one speaker, Rosemary, and I don't want to chop up your name because I can't see it, so, Rosemary from Duncan Road, sorry.
Yeah, just...
Thank you, City Council.
Just state your name and address.
Thirty-nine Duncan Road, Everett, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to relay to you a serious incident which happened on January 24th. It was around 6:30 PM, and I had an excess of 2,000 gallons of raw sewage come into the basement. I'm sure some of you have heard of it. Forty-eight hours of excrement and toilet paper was left in the basement until I went on the news, and then I had service masks to come in to clean it up. I called City Hall on Friday, the Friday I called, I kept getting from the, routed to the main number. They said, "Call back Monday, call back Monday." When you have a hazmat situation, you can't be left in. It was a biohazard, and when I say inches deep, it was 12 inches deep of water, and after it settled, it was nothing I can describe in words. The smell lasted seven days, okay? I have an ailing mother that I live with who's 75, just got over lung cancer, so, you know, thank God for the air scrubbers and machines and whatnot, but when I called the city to ask for some kind of emergency assistance or someone to hear me, they said, "Call back Monday." Isn't there a process in which someone can call somebody else to say, "Hey, we've got a situation, let's handle this, let's give her a call?" I went on the news, Boston Fox 25, and that's when I got, Mike, who saw it, Mike McGlaughlin saw it on TV and called me that night and said, "I'm coming over, I, you know, what can I do for you?" My mother was so at ease just to have that compassion of someone to listen because she lost everything. I mean, you open up your dryer and it's full of raw sewage. It's, you know, she's 75, it's everything she had that saved, china dishes and things of that nature. It was quite evident that she was going through a hard time, and she was consoled, but nobody else, nobody else stepped forward, and it's been four weeks, and now the basement's empty and sealed, but everything's gone. How do you replace that? What's the process? No one's called to say, "Hey, Rose, Donna," my mother's name is Donna Paley, "what can we do for you? Is there anything, you know, even just to lend an ear, you know, but going forward, I'd like to see something that, you know, when you call on a Friday and City Hall's closed, somebody should be able to answer the phone and say, "Hey, let me call the right appropriate people or see if I can get you someone to talk to." I called the Department of Public Works and got routed to the main number again, and four times I called, another three times my brother called who lives in Dorchester, I mean, it's just frustrating. How can you wait three more days living in that condition? It's just, it's unheard of. So, my plea to you is going forward for anybody else in this situation, thank God my mother has me, but if somebody else was left like that, maybe there's a way to have an emergency situation or a number you can call that someone will get the appropriate people in place to call somebody else, because it was a serious situation, and we still have trucks on and off going on that city to fix the pipeline, but when you have 2,200 gallons of water, that's PCs and toilet paper, and it's on everything, bedding curtains, things you can't replace, hope chests, I mean, we lost a lot of things in that basement, and a lot of it's sentimental value, but to see everything covered like that, it's just, and I have pictures, hundreds of pictures, you'd never believe it, you know, and to have an elderly woman watch her things get wrapped up in hazmat bags with a team that comes in, that's a biohazard. I had to live in that biohazard, and I was only worried about my mother's safety because she's my main concern, you know, she's an infirm woman and healing from surgery, so, you know, going forward, it should have been somebody other than Mike to stand up for the city to say, "Hey, let us give you a hand, what can we do, you know, even if you just want to talk, if you're frustrated." You know, I called the city and I tried, I did try my best, but I could not wait till Monday, that's why I went on the news, and then it was in the Everett Independent. It's, that was an excess of 2,000 gallons, that's raw sewage, that's a biohazard, and when I tell you, I was in front of it, it was not funny when it came out of that pipe. It was a series of unfortunate events, but to be left like that and left on, calling on deaf ears is just, it's wrong. So, I, going forward, want to see it not happen to anybody else so the proper measures are taken, because it's not like it happens every day, but if it did happen again or some other situation like this, you've got to be able to answer a phone on a Friday to call or say, "Hey, we can help you." I had no one to reach to, and I came to City Hall and the door was locked, the guy said, "No, we're closed." I didn't know where to go. Who do I call? Who do I call in that matter, you know? So, I just wanted to hope that something could be done going forward for anybody else who has to deal with some kind of emergency at this, you know, capacity. This wasn't simple, it was big, and it took at least a week and a half to clean up, and I'm still dealing with it.
Okay, we'll bring this to the attention of the city.
Thank you.
It can't happen again.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it?
Mr. President, we have a few pieces if we could take first, either item number 12 first, and then we have item 9, so...
Suspend the rules, take item number 12?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Clerk, can you read number 12 on the agenda, please?
Item number 12, this is a committee on community business development report that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new Class II motor vehicle dealer license for M. Falcon Auto at 47 Mystic Street. I do want to mention that this, there is, at 47, 45-47 Mystic Street, that was 12. No, it's... Sorry. So, I just want to state that there is an existing license there, so it's not a brand-new license, it's just a new tenant. There is an existing license at this location.
Counsel, do you have a question?
The committee voted to send this out favorably.
Okay, thank you. Yo.
Suspend the committee report, favorable action?
Okay. For favorable action to grant the license to M. Falcon Auto, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
No.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven yeas, two nays, you have passed the order. Wednesday at 12 o'clock or later, you can come and pick up the license.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. You also.
Counselor Capone?
Could we suspend the rules and take eight and nine collectively?
We have second on that? Second, all in favor to take eight and nine collectively? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, take eight and nine collectively? Clerk, you read eight first.
Yes. Items eight and nine, Mr. President, are petitions offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola as President. Item eight is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lodging house license renewal for Robert H. Lacudera at 11-13 Elsworth Street, and nine is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lodging house license renewal for Robert H. Lacudera at 51 Cottage Street. These are renewals, all papers are in order.
Mayable action? Second motion.
On the, on the motion, Counselor Florio.
I'd like to thank Mr. Lacudera for the great job that he does for the city. We have never once got a complaint on his properties, so, I...
As noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, these are favorable action for eight and nine collectively. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McInnes.
Excuse me.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
That's for items eight and nine, and Mr. Lacudera, same thing, 12 o'clock, noon on Wednesday or later, you can come and pick up your licenses. Thank you.
Can you read number nine, please?
That was nine, eight and nine, Mr. President. We're going to go back to the regular order business.
Back to regular order? Could you read number one on the agenda, please?
Yes. Item number one, is an order offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President. In order to appropriate $2,997,650 from the budgetary fund balance free cash into the following funds, general stabilization fund, $899,295; other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, $899,295; capital improvement stabilization fund, $1,199,060.
Counselor Hanlon.
Start off with favorable action.
Suspend rule 13.
Okay, and on the, could we have the petition of President? The petition, whoever...
Suspend, do suspend the rules first on 15.
Rule 13.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? Favorable action?
Is this 14? Because if it's not 14, let's go to committee.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, parliamentary procedure, nothing is on this floor until we move it on the floor. That's the reason I'm saying favorable action to everything that comes along now, so that it gets on the floor, otherwise we're talking about nothing, so that's why I have favorable action.
Okay, I'm going to declare this routine.
Okay. So, I second the favorable action.
But not voting on it, so, now I would like to have a petition before it.
Now, you want to speak on it, it's before you?
Have the petition, please.
Counselor Mc...
Who would be the mayor?
Oh, Mr. Demus.
Anyone, up there. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, if we could, through you, to Mr. Demus, I'm only interested in one thing, and that's the other post-employment benefit liability trust fund, $899,000. I don't recall hearing that before.
It's nothing new, it's actually the order before you, comes straight out of the city's adopted, the city councils adopted financial policies and procedures. We have another post-employment benefits trust fund, the city's had one for at least probably the last six to seven years, ever since GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, required all municipalities to start reporting that liability, and as such, at that time, the city created the other OPEB trust fund.
So...
So, the percentages that we have are coming straight out of city policy, 15% to the city's general stabilization, 15% to the other, or OPEB liability trust fund, and 20% to the capital improvement stabilization fund.
Okay, I wasn't interested, though, just the one I was talking about, can you tell me a little bit about where that goes and who gets it and how it happens and whatever it is? Because I'm really at odds with that employee benefits liability trust fund, I really don't know what that is, I'd know a little bit more.
So, because the city is a, well, we have our own retirement system, and as part of that benefit, we are under PERAX, we follow all the state guidelines, but because we have that pension retirement system, one of those benefits that somebody that retires underneath the retirement system gets is a portion of their medical for the duration of their pension is subsidized. So, there's a charge that we have that we get from having retirees as part of our health insurance, so, the GASB requires us to recognize that liability, so, even though, just like the retirement system, even though our annual contribution is 15 million, that doesn't mean our costs stop there, our costs go in perpetuity as long as our retirees are still living. So, it's a liability that, that we have.
So, that's for retirees.
It is.
Thank you very much.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President, through you to our invited guest, Mr. Demus, can you maybe highlight a little bit on capital improvements, what will we, what are we looking at, or obviously this isn't the full plan that we've got submitted at, so, is the itemized, the breakdown of projects that we're going to go after this one?
There's actually no proposed spending for the monies that are being recommended to put into the capital improvement trust fund, it's, it's another stabilization fund. It would, if any monies, prior to any monies being spent out of the CIP stabilization fund, would require city council appropriation. This is just a matter of taking a portion of free cash and putting it into these various stabilization accounts.
Do we, so, we're just moving it from one savings account to another savings account?
This is something that you do every year, yes.
Okay.
I'll say it, Counselor. Counselor Capone, and then Counselor Marchese.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Demus, good evening. If you could, could you give us the, the current balance on each of these accounts without this money being added to it, so as it stands now before the vote?
Without the money being added to it, our general stabilization is approximately 2.5 million. Capital stabilization, last week you had an appropriation of 300, so it were at about 2.2 million, and in the OPEB trust fund, stabilization is about 3.5 million.
Okay, and what, what do you recommend we try to be at with each of these numbers as far as the safety net?
Well, everything that, that we're doing is trying to eventually bring the city to a AAA rated community, so, I'll tackle the hardest one first.
Okay.
And the OPEB stabilization fund, AAA rated communities, what they're trying to do is they're trying to make that fully funded, very much like what we're doing, what the city's been doing, making up with the pension liability. So, the goal is to have those liabilities fully funded. Our OPEB liability as of June 30 of 18 is roughly over $100 million, so we have a long ways to go. This is something that the city has just recently, or more recently, started to address. From a capital stabilization standpoint, certainly, if we could pay cash for our capital items and not incur debt costs, that would be great, we're certainly not there. In regards to our general stabilization, what I'm looking at is anywhere from 15 to 18% of our general fund expenditures. We're not at that goal, but it's something that we're trying to work towards.
Okay, no, very good. All right, thank you very much, I don't have any other questions.
Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Demus, through the chair, what is the current, what will be, what will be left in free cash after this appropriation?
About 2.9 million dollars.
All right, the other question I had was looking at the other funds, but you've already provided us with that information, thank you.
Any more questions for our guest?
Thank you.
Could we suspend the action?
Thank you.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order, Mr. President.
Clerk, can you read number two on the agenda, please?
Item number two is an order offered by Richard J. Delasola as President, in order to amend the city of Everett administrative code. I would...
Could we please grant further time, I believe we have to have...
He's trying to do it the right way. Second motion.
On the motion?
On the motion, Counselor Florio.
We'd like to grant further time because we still have to have, I believe, a public hearing.
So, in accordance with, with our rules and with the law, we have to postpone this to the next meeting, we will have a public hearing, which I will publish tomorrow, as long as you've passed it, I didn't want to spend the money on the public hearing if you didn't pass it to go further, you'll have some time to review this, and we'll hold a public hearing on the 11th. Please remember that this is the mayor's administrative code, and you're either voting up or down on it, you do not have the right to amend, to, to take away or add anything to it, I just want to remind you.
And, does everybody have a copy of this? I know you emailed it to us.
And I will, I'll print some hard copies before you leave, if everybody would like that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have it, I did receive it at the end of the week, it's voluminous, as we know, is there any way that we could ask, well, I'm going to ask that the administration, if they could, also provide the membership with a point outline of exactly what is looking to be changed, so, instead of reinventing the wheel and looking at the whole administrative code, we could specifically look at those sections that are looking to be amended, it'd be more time efficient.
That's okay, if you want to do that, I, we did leave it, or I did leave it, in track changes, so that way you, you would see what was there.
All right, I didn't see that.
Oh, yeah, I, I personally...
As long as it is, beautiful.
Made the amendments with the city solicitor.
Okay, as long as it's a...
You're good with that, then?
Make it easy, yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. I'll print some, I'll print some copies. So, which will take precedence, as long as there's a second.
On the motion, Counselor Matouski.
Thank you, Mr. President, I received the package regarding the administrative code changes.
Yeah, we have two motions.
I don't know, is it, in practice now that an appointee to a board or a commission is four years, or is it six years? I noticed it said six years.
I can, I can answer that.
Okay, and I just want to, before you answer it, I just want to give you my, my feeling on it, that if it is six years, the mayor serves four years, and if he appoints somebody for six years, that would mean the, if he served one term, which is four years, he's stuck with somebody that he probably, our new mayor, or whoever that may be, may not want that person, so, that puzzles me, I think, you know, for the future, right, I mean, you know, we don't have any restrictions on how many terms you can serve here, but you can answer that question, then, I appreciate it.
I can, I can answer that in a few parts. One, if you, you'll read early in the, in the admin code, you'll see where we address the mayor's authority to, to remove people so that we don't have any of those situations necessarily. You still need just cause, but you can remove them, and it's always been in there, the language has changed a little. Two, the majority of appointees are up to three years unless state law says it, so, we'll use the six year, that would be the licensing board, that is by Massachusetts general laws, it is mandated that after you do the one, two, three year, so that we have staggered terms, that you have to be appointed for six years, that's state law, and we can't supersede state law. There are some that require five years...
Is that just the licensing board?
That, the six year is just the licensing, other boards, like elections are four years, some are five years, but the majority of boards are three years, and we often have to stagger them. The administration and I have worked on reorganizing the boards now, so that way we make sure that they're all staggered going forward, and that way we can have a nice, clean reappointments, so you'll see that in the beginning part, where, where it states those, and if you have any questions, you can call me and I'll, I did work on this.
I'm going to read over that again, because, you know, I don't think that, you know, for the future, I don't know if that's something new, now, if the state mandates a six-year term, well, that's different.
But it's only for one or two.
Just for one or two boards?
Yeah, I know licensing for sure off the top of my head.
Well, the housing board is...
That, that's actually a quasi-state board, so, that's what they call them, so, that's a state board that's appointed by the mayor.
Well, I knew of an instance a few years ago, Mr. Clerk, that there was a carryover of a housing board member, that a new mayor came in, of course, that was a two-year term, so, the new mayor wanted to appoint somebody new, and the person that was on the housing board didn't want to leave because his term didn't end, so I'm just saying, you know, when somebody new does come in, I want these terms to be consistent with a new mayor. You know, I can understand 180 days, it takes a little time to fill positions, or maybe the mayor at that time would choose to keep these people, but it's unfair to, for the, you know, if we're changing something to overlap a new administration, I don't think that's right.
And I agree with you, the only, the only issue is that if, if it's in Massachusetts general laws, we cannot supersede them, we have to go by the law unless we...
I'm going to take a look at that, if I have any questions, I'll call you.
Absolutely.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes, Miss, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm familiar with that incident that the council was discussing, the point is that after the members were asked to resign, the housing board's lawyer contacted the state and found out that we could not do that because that housing board was under control of the state, so the mayor, whoever it is, cannot get anybody off that board, unless it's, their time is up.
You all say it, Counselor?
So, the motion would be to postpone this to our next meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the next meeting?
Mr. President?
Counselor Capone?
We suspend the rules and take items three through seven collectively?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, take three to seven collectively?
Okay, Mr. President, items three through seven are petitions offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President. Item three is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer License Renewal for ENC Foreign Auto Repair at 29 Garden Street. Four is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer License Renewal for Boston Freightliner at Two River Green Drive. Item five is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer License Renewal for AGM Auto Sales at 152 Ferry Street. Item six is that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer License Renewal for 380 Auto Fine at 382nd Street, and item number seven is that the Everett City Council hereby approves a Class II Motor Vehicle Dealer License Renewal for Affordable Auto Mechanic, Inc. at 83 Vine Street. All papers are in order, counselors.
Favorable action on all of them.
On the motion, Counselor Capone?
I was just going to ask for favorable action, and unless there was any objection to any of the individual parts, one roll call be taken for the entire items from three to seven?
Three to seven.
With instructing our clerk to record it accordingly.
On the motion on favorable action, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes. Can you read number 10, please, on the agenda?
Item number 10 is a committee on legislative affairs and elections report in ordinance for a dry bulk storage license offered by Counselor Fred Capone.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, the last time this piece was in front of us, there were two concerns that we had that put it back in the committee. One was a little bit of vagueness, and the second one was a concern about cost towards the businesses. So we put it in committee, and I looked at it prior to that meeting. And in order to try to make it less vague, we did recommend the insertion of a new paragraph that basically is going to exempt out any entities that are already regulated in some other manner with regards to the city, whether it be a transfer station, a junk dealer, scrap metal, et cetera, the whole laundry list of them. So if they're already being regulated, we're not going to worry about that. And the most important issue with this, it's really environmental as opposed to economic. So with regards to the environmental, I do have one amendment to make. It's in the preamble. But right now, we have no regulation in place in the community. And the biggest concern that we have is we want to make sure that we're protecting the soil, the air, and the water for the community. And without any kind of restrictions or rulings in place, any entity can come in as long as they zone properly and put as much of whatever product they want. So it is going to be a, I think it's a piece in work. You do need to have something. The good news is that the power is with this body. So when a petitioner comes in and they have a particular purpose, whether it's sand, cement, rocks, mulch, salt, any of that stuff, they have to come in front of the body. They have to explain what they're looking to do, what their purpose is, tell us what their square footage is of the site, how much they need at one particular time. And then it's up to this body on a case-by-case basis to determine whether or not, you know, the lot size they have is sufficient for what they need to do. As far as the fee, originally it was in at five, and I requested an amendment up to 10 for 25 cubic yards. Again, it's going to be a piece in progress. It's a piece of work. This is new. We haven't done this before. I have a feeling, I know that there was some concern at the last meeting, that $10 per 25 cubic feet was too much. I think we're going to find out that it's too little. And just so that my colleagues understand what we're talking about, whatever cubic yard you claim that you want on-site at any one particular time, let's say it's 100 cubic yards, you're paying $10 per 25 cubic, one time, for the whole year. So if you need 100 cubic yards, you're paying $40 to have 100 cubic yards on-site. You can take from that pile and add to that pile every single day, three times a day. It's still that same $40. And just to give the counselors a picture, as far as salt, 25 cubic yards of salt is roughly 54,000 pounds. 25 cubic yards of sand is approximately 81,000 pounds. And 25 cubic pounds of mulch is anywhere between 10,000 and 20,000 pounds, depending on what you're talking about. So we're not talking about little quantities. And any entity that is going to have maximum capacity under 25 cubic yards doesn't need to apply for a license. So we're not going to hurt the little guy, and we're really not trying to hurt anybody. What we're trying to do is we're trying to protect the environment. I think $10 for 25 cubic yards is fair. Another issue would be, how do you enforce this? The reality is you're going to have a petitioner come in front of you. They're going to give you an idea of what they need it for. This is going to be the amount that they're going to take. We can kind of discuss what we're looking at for a pile. Is it 12 by 12, 10 feet tall, whatever it happens to be? A clerk who's overtaxed, he's going to be on it. ISD will be on it. The reality is it's going to be an eyeball. You're not going there with a measuring stick. You're not going there with a measuring cup, trying to figure out how much they have. You say, okay, this is what they told us they're going to have for a pile on hand. You look at it, it looks right. If it looks obvious that it's not, or there's a complaint from the neighborhood, well, then you go in to check it out. But the reality, like I said, this is a piece in progress. Without it, we have no protection, and we desperately need protection. So the amendment that I want to make on it is in the preamble. It's in between the two whereas. We're going to have another whereas, it's going to say, whereas the city has an interest in protecting its soil, air, and waterways from contamination, and then it'll continue on. And so the purpose of this is to protect the air, the soil, the water, and it's also to protect residents from all of that flying around, and to give this city council the ability to set some form of parameters if a company wants to store dry bulk on their site. We're not saying you can't, but you have to be reasonable depending on the square footage you've got. And without this, we have nothing to say. Companies come in, as long as they zone, they can put as much as they want there, and we have nothing to say about it. And that's not a good idea. So I'm asking that we amend it to include that whereas in the preamble, to accept the changes that were recommended by the committee, and ask fable action.
On that motion, Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on this committee, and I've given this a lot of serious thought. What an open mind. And unfortunately, this ordinance is unenforceable. I don't care what anybody says. They come in front of us, you have so many odds, so many of this. We don't have the experience to that. So my recommendation is, I know the council works very hard, and I definitely want to be fair, and I definitely want to be open-minded, but I want to refer this to the city solicitor's office. Let's find out what other cities have this. If this is new, I don't want to put something on the books that's going to cause a problem. Because if code enforcement goes down there, and they say they have too much, now they're going to come in front of us, and they don't have enough, we're going to cause a war. So to me, let's do it right the first time. There's no rush to this. And as far as the environmental, I think the state takes care of that, okay? We want to protect our lands, absolutely. We don't want anybody to come in and just start throwing things around. I get it. But because this is new, why don't we find out what other cities and towns are doing? And let's do it right to begin with. Why do we have to keep changing things, or why do we have to get into a problem before we change things all the time? Let's get it right first. That's my opinion. My gut tells me not to vote for this. And it's very hard because I'm trying to keep an open mind, but my gut is telling me this is unenforceable. And when you're, on the committee, I think the clerk said there was about 12 businesses, approximately.
That's a guess.
It's a guess, okay?
Yep.
There's one big business in this portion, and the city does business with these people. So at the end, it doesn't matter if you're charging $40 or $50 or $100. The city's going to end up paying for it. But I understand this is not a moneymaker. So if we want to protect the city, and we want a certain height, or we want a certain thing, let's put the height in effect, and let's punish the bad people. You know, when you go and you tell a business after they're paying 50, 60, $100,000 in taxes, which we have said this going on and on, how do you assess? The business people are paying too many taxes. Now you're going to nickel and dime it with another $400? That's worse than them paying the $100,000. So to me, I would prefer this go to the city solicitor, and let's do some research and see what other cities and towns are doing with something like this. Because my gut tells me to vote against it right now.
Are you making a motion on that?
I make a motion to refer it to the city solicitor and do some research of other cities and towns that have an ordinance.
Okay, I get others. I have Hanlon, McLaughlin, and then Marchese. Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I know Counselor Capone did a lot of good work on this, and I appreciate what he did. I also think that we should do more, a continued amount, a continued amount of study on this. And I have a big problem with the renewable fee. And we say $10 for every 25 cubic yards, and I'm not sure if that's every 25 cubic yards coming in. One time, okay. So no matter what comes in. But you have to remember that one truck, big truck, is 17 cubic yards. So two trucks is 34 cubic yards, and that's it. But that site can probably hold a million cubic yards. Chelsea has got 9 million cubic yards. So there's a big amount of money there. And I think that, you know, $10 for every 25 cubic yards is way, way too much when you're talking about the amount of maximum stories they could have. You know, it should probably be a 10 cents because that's still going to come out with $650 or something like that, you know, or come up with just a standard fee, whether they have anything there or not, that they pay $150 a year for the story. That's what I feel. So whenever it comes back with the city solicitor, we can make some sort of an announcement like that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I respect the good work that my colleague from Ward 1 did on this. I think this is something that it does need to continue to be worked on. But I think we should immediately get something on the books so that we start to protect our community, and we can work on it. No question that there may be additional tweaks that need to happen, additional work, but that can happen. As long as we have something on the books now to protect us today, tomorrow, weeks ahead, it will give us enough time to be able to continue to work on this. I actually spoke to some of my friends on the Chelsea City Council who were really interested in seeing what we were doing here in Everett, and I plan on showing this to them this week. I wanted to see what they had done in Chelsea. I actually spoke to another friend of mine who is a city councilor in Worcester, who was interested in sharing his notes and our notes with him out in Worcester. Both have large piles of material stored in their cities. So those were two cities that I reached out to in the past few days to see what they had on their books and what they had in their city charters. And I think that Counselor DeFlorio is right. We should start to look at what other communities are doing to be able to help our environment, to be able to help our community. But I don't think it hurts putting something on the books currently so that we start to protect the city of Everett today, tonight, tomorrow. Then we can go back and revisit this, whether it goes back to committee, stays here on the floor, wherever the work wants to be done. But I think it's irresponsible if we don't put something on the books now to not have anything. I think that doesn't help anybody in the community. I think we can always work and grow on something as long as we have something to start with. And this is something that is actually very good to start with. This is a great piece of business that maybe can have tweaks and small adjustments, but I think we have a pretty good base to start with if we are to accept this tonight and put this on our books. Thank you.
So are you making a motion, Counselor?
I'll make a motion.
There's two motions, okay.
There's some people speaking on it.
Yep. Counselor Marchese?
Of course, Counselor Capone, great work on this thing. I don't know if we would ever, we would enforce this, $10 for every 25 cubic yards. Are we better off just saying, look, give us $50,000 a year for an application fee? Well, I mean, you know, think about it. Three truckloads, you know, there's 30, you know, $30 there, right? It's, well, three would be $20. I mean, if they're going to put millions and millions of cubic yards, I mean, are we better off just saying, who's going to, like I said, who's going to enforce this? That's the, that's the issue I have. I mean, do we just say, give us some, give us a $50,000, $100,000 flat fee for the year? And that's probably what this will end up bad and upshift. There's millions of cubic feet there. So, I mean, unless there's somebody who's going to be down there enforcing this, and the enforced part is the part of, I mean, I like it, and I like also Counselor McLaughlin speaking, how we're protecting the environment a little bit also, which is very important. But like I said, I think there should be something, because I was actually on the committee when we talked about this, but how we can enforce the money is going to be a hard part. And that's what my consistency, maybe we need one flat fee for the year.
Do we have any more speakers for the first time on this? Counselor Capone, then Counselor Hanlon for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I fully understand, I'm sorry.
Oh, you, oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. I fully understand the concern about how do you enforce it. The reality is almost every ordinance we have, you have some sort of an issue with how do you enforce it. In terms of the amount of money, we don't want to cripple the businesses. So, I mean, a flat fee, it may at some point in time come out to be the fairest thing, but right now, we really don't know. So what's going to happen is a petitioner is going to come in front of us, and they're going to tell us how much they want to have on-site at any one given time, like the maximum amount they want on-site. We divide that by 25 cubic yards and charge them $10 for each of that. And from the numbers I was talking, we're talking staggering numbers. We're not talking about five pounds. We're talking about 80,000 pounds, 54,000 pounds, depending on what the material is. So I have a feeling that we're going to start at the 10, and we're going to say, whoa, we need to make that number higher. But again, I just want to get something going. And this isn't a piece that just came yesterday, and it's not something that I did on my own. I want to let my colleagues know that a lot of work went into this by the city clerk, by the assistant city clerk, Mr. Flood, and it has been reviewed by the solicitor's office. So we've been working on this piece for about six months or more, so since June. So we've been working on it for a long time, and I understand the concern. But the reality is, right now, we have no protection in place. We can't put any restrictions on material that comes in, capping them. A good point was, I mentioned at the last meeting, on the parkway next to Dunkin' Donuts, when they were putting up the storage garage, there was this huge mound of dirt, and it blew all over the place, and it sat there forever. And we had nothing on the books to do anything with it. So we did nothing with it. So the reality is, this is going to put the power in the hands of this body. We're not relinquishing any power. When a petitioner comes up and they tell us what they need, they're going to give us the cubic foot, yard that they're going to use, and that's how we're going to calculate the number. And then as we go on in time, we're going to find out, geez, maybe it needs to be a higher number? Maybe it needs to be a lower number? I don't think so. I think it's going to need to be a higher number. But rather than do a flat fee right now, I think this is probably the fairest way to do it. And as far as other communities, I've done a search, too. I can't find anything. I know, I know that the clerk has looked. It's new area, and we have had this reviewed by the city solicitor's office. I think it is important to put something in place, and it's a trial and error. We'll learn as we go. I don't think we're going to cripple anybody with this. I think that all we're doing is we're protecting our community, and we're making sure that anything that comes into play, the community that's going to be stored, is going to be stored responsibly, professionally, and in a way that is going to increase the quality of life in this community. And that's really all we're trying to do. So that's why I'm asking for fable action. It's a little bit of a leap of faith for some folks. I'm asking you to do it. Let's put it on the books, and then we'll amend it as we need to, as time goes on, as situations present itself. But without it, we have no control over anything that's happening in the community, and that's a bad idea.
Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have to apologize for not, I just got this this evening, for not reading it, although I know it's been around for a long time. I've seen it a lot. But the name of this ordinance is an ordinance to create a dry bulk storage license, and all I was talking about was salt. So I have to apologize to everybody because I was just talking about salt. However, I think it's a good idea if we do test other communities to find out what they've done for dry bulk storage, that's any kind of storage that they want to start, you know, put in there. So that's what I, and that was your motion, right?
I've researched this since, none of the local municipalities have anything like this, but...
No other towns have it?
No. But the licensing authorities in those other towns and clerks were very interested in what we were doing.
Okay.
And looking to do something very similar.
Second motion.
One more speaker, Counselor Napole Tano.
Thank you. First of all, you know, I think when we see an ordinance like this being created, first of all, I need to compliment Counselor Capone. You know, we need to change the way we think and envision the future of the city. You know, if, in the past, these type of piles, these type of things that used to be left around the city, we had an industrial mindset. Wasn't all that concerned about what was on these properties because all we were concerned about is getting some revenue from that. That's changing. We're a city that's moving into a different direction. We're moving away from a more industrialized usage. We're looking at more of an entertainment. And of course, when we take into consideration the environment, you know, these are all valid concerns. I mean, realistically, 30 years ago, who would have thought of Everett as a seacoast city? Malden River was inaccessible. The harbor was inaccessible. You know, you know, we've got the polarized right there on the harbor, you know, and though I'm sure that they do a good job in keeping things out of the water, in the past, that has always been a problem. I think it's, I don't think it's as important that we wait to see if somebody else has done something. You know, this is an opportunity for us to take the lead. And if there are other cities and other communities that are looking and seeing what we develop here, then it is important that we get it right. So, I mean, I do agree with both colleagues. But, you know, I think that this is something that we need to take a good, hard look at. I can see a considerable amount of work has been done. I think it's, I think it's very positive direction. So if it needs, if you, it needs to be reviewed by the city solicitor for legalities, I have no problem with that. But as far as looking to see what other communities have done, you may be hard-pressed to find something if we have made, if you have other communities like Worcester and Chelsea that are looking to see what we're coming up with. Because those cities have already dealt with larger-scale dry bulk than we have. So, you know, I'm going to support this either way because I think it is important that we start moving away from the, you know, whatever we can get type of mentality here and start putting restrictions. Because something like this, a restriction like this may invert, may take a business that's looking at coming here that would not necessarily match up with the direction that some of us are seeing the city moving into, and it might be just enough for them to consider to look somewhere else. And just because they're looking somewhere... And just because they're looking somewhere else doesn't mean we're not going to lose, we're not going to gain revenue for that property. But let's, 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 let's take care of the property we have in the city. There was a time where too much was done here. We have these heavily contaminated areas in the city over years of not thinking in these terms. We need to change the way we think. So, I commend Councilman Capone on this. I'll support it if we approve it tonight. I'll support it if we decide to hold off for further information from the city solicitor. But I think it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, through you, can we invite up Keith Slattery, our assistant city solicitor, who's in the back of the chambers? I know he's very active in most ordinances and pieces that come to his office. I'd like to hear from him if he is prepared to speak on this this evening and make a motion and we invite up Keith Slattery, our assistant city solicitor.
Second in, all in favor? All opposed, eyes have it? Just state your name and position, please.
Good evening, councillor. It's Keith Slattery, assistant city solicitor.
Slattery, good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Slattery, can you give me an overview, you know, briefly or whatever, your feelings on this and any involvement that you've had in reviewing of this? I'm sure you have.
Haven't looked at it recently, but I did work on this and review it, and it is, as Councillor Capone states. I do know that there are some, not neighboring cities, but several communities in the state that have something similar to this. I know Cambridge is one. I know Lynn has one. Beverly has one. Peabody has one. And Springfield, I think those are the ones that I reviewed when we were looking into this. So, it's not novel. It's not an original, original ordinance, but we did do a lot to craft it and make sure that it would probably meet the needs for this community.
Would you, as, as our legal counsel in the city, advise or support us approving this this evening?
I, I do support this. It's like the councilman said, it's got a lot to do with pollution. It's got a lot to do with water runoff, and it would be great, again, I'm always for having a mechanism for enforcement should something go awry. It doesn't mean that we'll be using this as an enforcement tool, but it is a licensing tool. It's always good to have that enforcement tool in your back pocket.
Yeah, and that's exactly the way I feel on this, and that's why I made my statement earlier, which is let's get something on the books tonight to stop protecting our city, and then we can always work on, on improving anything, or tweaking anything, or making amendments to any piece of law that's on our books. But it's better to have something there than to have nothing there and to have a fast one pulled on our community before we're able to get something onto the books. So, we have an opportunity tonight to put something on the books to at least get us started, and then we can work on it. And with your opinion that it's the right thing to do and you support this, I don't think there's any further discussion that needs to be had. I do agree that those towns do have something on there. I did call and speak, Springfield, and they did have something on their books already in Springfield, and I think that we are in a very good place right now with this piece to get us protected. And then work out fees. I said it in the committee, I kind of was in mixed view of whether it should be a flat fee or per, per cubic yard fee.
If my memory serves, I think the fees were by cubic yardage.
In other, in other communities, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly correct. So, that's, I think we're, I think there should be no further question whether or not we should support this tonight to put our city in a good place to protect the future of our environment. Thank you.
I'll say, councillor? Councillor Matuski?
I have no questions of the attorney.
Oh, okay, councillor. Councillor DeFlorio.
Thank you. You said that Peabody and Springfield has this on the books already?
Yes.
An ordinance. Okay. I'm not concerned about the ordinance. I think the ordinance is, is great. There's not a problem with the ordinance. What I'm concerned about, how are we going to enforce it? So, people come to us, they say, "Okay, I'm going to store 300,000 pounds. I'm going to use pounds." If we go, someone complains, and 300,000 pounds looks like a lot. So, someone calls us up and says, "Hey, these people are storing like a million thousand pounds." We go there, how do we know that's actually 300,000 pounds?
I would first say that I think it's incumbent on the person applying for the license to tell us what their storage capacity needs will be and how they're going to store the material. If we do have reason to find that they have been inaccurate with us, that is something we would have to look into further. We don't have a precedent for that. But we do have engineers that work for the city, and a lot of people in DPW experience that could, I think Councillor Capone used the word eyeball, but if we had reason to believe that somebody was being untruthful in their license application, then that would be something we'd have to further explore. I wouldn't be able to give you that answer right now. I'm not an engineer.
That's my problem, is enforcing it. And I know we have a lot of stuff on the books that are unenforceable, and I don't want to add any more to the books that cannot be enforced. That's my idea. You know, we could, we could write ordinances all day long. We could spend years and months writing ordinances, but we're good at that if we can't enforce them. And this is something we need to look at. I think we need to look at every ordinance, whatever's unenforceable, take it off the books. So, I, I believe that's the problem. The problem is it's unenforceable. So, we want to keep the environment clean either way, whether they pay, or they don't pay, you're not keeping the environment clean. What's the difference how much they store?
Well, the storage, I think the storage method is also outlined in the ordinance.
It does say they have to be, you know, at least tacked, so the whole, the whole intent of this is to not have it.
Right. I could see putting a height in a cubic foot and telling them they have to cover it, and I could see that if they don't do it, then we put a fine to it. Now, you're punishing the bad people coming in. There's only 12, we don't have much land left in Everett. There's maybe 12 lots that this can happen, okay? It's not like we have a whole, like before, a whole city that, you know, you had junkyards everywhere, and junkyards are needed. I'm not going against the junkyards, don't get me wrong, but the junkyards are out of this ordinance. So, if somebody buys 300,000 feet down the street and decides to put a junkyard on it, we have no control over it.
I, I think that might be a different kind of storage than what this ordinance seeks to enforce.
Yes, I understand that, because I understand that. But what I'm saying is, we don't have a lot of land that these businesses can come in to, to store the dry bulk materials. So, the few businesses that we have, I just, I felt it right along. My gut tells me it's unenforceable, and that's all they restore. And I think it's going to cause a few problems, because the business people are going to come up and say, "No, that's not true. That's not what happened. I'm not storing this much. Here's my invoices." You know what I mean? So, I, I think, like Councillor Marchesi said, either put a flat fee or tell them how much they could store, and if they store anything over that, or over the height or something, because the height's easy to measure, then you get fined. So, that's, that's my opinion, okay? And I was, I will look at the Peabody and Springfield. How do they enforce it? We don't know that, right?
I think ones that are similar to ours, too, would be Cambridge and Lynn.
Cambridge and Lynn.
Yeah. That's just for memory, but I'm pretty sure.
Well, we were just told there was nothing on the books, and now we've got all these. So, Cambridge and Lynn?
Yes.
Do have it on the books.
If my memory serves, yes.
Okay. So, I don't know. I'd like to check with them to see how they enforce it. All right, thank you.
Any more questions for our guest?
Thank you very much.
Councillor Matuski, I'll let you speak, because you already handed up before the guest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no questions of Attorney Slattery, but I appreciate him being here. As the attorney for the city said, we are the licensing tool, this board. Now, just a year ago, we voted for a business to come into the waterfront area, and right next door, the Boston Edison plant, I'll refer to it as that, Exelon, whatever you call it. That's being considered for a hotel resort now, okay? We have to be very careful what we vote on. This wouldn't even be here. I can see Councilman Capone's point here, trying to address this after the fact. I voted against that business. No offense, I know they do very well in Chelsea. Tonight, we voted for an auto body shop abutting the parking lot of the Encore Casino. The new license, it doesn't say every new will or ain't, it's a brand-new license. Now, I've represented that area for 35 years. I own property in that area. It's time to look at the big picture, and there's only a few areas in Everett where you can put mountains of whatever, rocks, all cement, whatever you want. It's in that area, or on the Riviera Beach Parkway, which we now have the triangle business feature there. The storage facility, the self-storage, that snuck in somehow. But we've got to be careful up here, what we vote for. This councilman put a lot of work into it to at least try to put a roadblock in front of some businesses that might want to come here. I'm not voting for any new auto body shops down the line, any new, okay? I'm not voting for any kind of industrial creepy business on the waterfront. At some point, I know this is boring to some people, but let me tell you, I am not going to vote for something that's going to affect the future of that area in a negative way, and we've got to be careful. It's up to us. That, that vote that we took, we licensed them, whether it's for a shack, a 10 gallons of fuel, we licensed them that night. I voted no, but that's just the way it is, you know? Now, tonight, we just voted for a new auto body shop on Mystic Street, abutting the beautiful parking lot that we're going to have that holds 1,000 cars with beautiful landscaping. You know, before you vote for something, and, "Oh, well, it's just an auto body shop", well, I've put up with a lot over the years. Ward 1 is very difficult, sections of Ward 1. In that area, those, a lot of those people have moved away, but I got to tell you, we've got to really think before we issue licenses. Nothing against the business in Chelsea, they, they're going to, they paid $9 million for that, that's, that's probably doubled in, in a year since they bought it. Now, yeah, it's double or triple probably, and I, good luck to them. But you mark my words, where those towers are, those chimneys, and the old Boston Edison plant will be a resort, and we know that somebody's bidding on that now, are looking into it now. I just took a tour along with four members of the city council of this, this resort the other day, and I got to tell you, I'm not voting for any cheesy thing in that area. What I consider cheesy businesses that I've put up with over the years, I'm not doing it. So, count me out of piles of anything down there. The rivers, what do they call it? The rivers edge group, the waterfront, the island end area. I think they met three times in the last 20 years, you know, and they've never reached out to me in those 20 years, okay? So, let's be real up here. Let's be real. Before you make a vote for a new license or a pile of anything, remember, we've got a $3 billion project across the street, and it's very close to historical things that are happening less than a quarter mile away, the Bunker Hill Monument. I could go on and on, but let's be real up here. I'm not going to vote for anything that's detrimental to that neighborhood ever again. The honeymoon is over for that stuff. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any more speakers?
So, Councillor DeFlorio's motion takes precedence, which is to refer to the solicitor's office, and that, Mr. President, there's a voice vote.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'd like to put a motion where we grant further time later, for two weeks, until I have the time to check these other cities and towns. That's, from my opinion.
That's your motion?
Anybody else is ready to vote for it tonight? That's all I'm going to, it's not a problem.
Do we have, we have a second?
I want to see how they...
All in favor on that motion?
Well, it's a voice vote, unless somebody, yeah. It's a voice vote, Mr. President, so it's all, all in favor.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Do a roll call vote.
Okay. This is to postpone for two weeks. Correct, councillor?
Yes. Correct, councillor? Two weeks.
Is that right? Councillor Capone?
No.
Councillor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councillor DePiero?
Yes.
Councillor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councillor Marchesi? This is the postpone.
Two weeks? Yes.
Councillor Matuski?
Yes.
Councillor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councillor Napolitano?
Yes.
Councillor Simonelli?
No.
And President Della Sola?
Yes.
Seven ayes, three nays, you have postponed for two weeks.
Clerk, could you read item 11 on the agenda, please?
Sure. Item 11 is again, a Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections report. Mr. President, it's an ordinance offered by Councillor Richard J. Della Sola Jr. as president, an ordinance for a commercial passenger vessel license for businesses located inside the city of Everett be established. The committee voted to report back to the city council with a favorable recommendation for favorable action as amended.
Accept the committee report, place on file?
We did. It was part of the favorable action.
See, we should accept the report first.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, except the report? The ayes have it?
favorable action as amended.
On that?
As amended.
They'll second it. Councillor McGlaughlin, do you?
Mr. President, I think this is a very good piece to put on the calendar, piece to put on record, excuse me. I just have one question, and I don't know if the administration can answer it tonight. I'm not really sure that it's the right time to ask it, which is, if we're going to vote for this, and we talked about it in committee, are we going to look at for a harbor master? We're now allowing boats to travel throughout our waterways. We now need to think about who's going to regulate, as Councillor DeFlorio said on the last piece, who can enforce it? Who's going to regulate boats coming in and out, when they're able to come in and out, flow of traffic around, around the harbor? I wonder if, I don't want to put this on Wynn Resorts, because I know they're not going to be the only one that is going to have traffic coming in and out of our, our waterways, but if Mr. Taco could talk on that, he's in the audience this evening. If he's not comfortable, it's okay. I'd actually like to have Mr. O'Donnell up before us, the mayor's chief of staff, to ask the city if they have looked at what our plan will be for a harbor master now that we're going to actually license vessels coming to and from our shores. As I stated in the committee meeting, we're going to have many other businesses that are going to want to tie into our waterways and going to want to run water taxis in and out of our community. As we've seen many times, of many people that have traveled Boston, and I saw on a daily basis when I was at Spalding Rehab, there's several companies that traveled the waterways in Boston, moving passengers around the Seaport District, Logan Airport, throughout throughout the waterways. Who's going to now regularly in control who's coming in and who's coming out? And I would like to hear from the administration whether or not they have thought about how we move forward to bring on a harbor master.
Do you want to invite the chief of staff up?
I would like to ask the chief of staff to come before us.
All in favor?
And if Mr. Taco would like to come up?
All opposed, the ayes have it? Could chief of staff come up and representative of wind? Encore. Just state your name and positions, please.
Good evening, everyone. John Taco, Executive Director of Government Community Relations for Encore Boston Harbor.
Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff.
Mr. Taco, very nice to have you here on time.
Thank you, sir. This is a gift from my wife on Valentine's Day.
That's why I mentioned it. John, I would like to just see, I don't want to put this on your shoulders, or on the company's shoulders, but the fact of the matter is, your company is the first one to be moving boats around the waterways of Everett. And I know that, from reports that we've heard, that there's three being built currently for your establishment. Are you looking into a harbor master? Has the company looked into how they're going to move boats in and out of our waterways so that we don't have some kind of jam in traffic, or whatever the case might be?
Sure.
Or has they worked with the city office?
So we'll have a number of different, I don't have the exact number offhand, but a number of different dock attendants, and we will have somebody that's managing the docks and managing the attendants. They are all hired under our transportation department, we have a transportation department within the building. A week ago, in the City of Everett participated, we convened the first transport, regional transportation meeting for operations at opening and after opening. The state police marine unit was there, the City of Boston marine unit was there, the Coast Guard was in attendance, and a major component of that was how we were going to manage the navigable waterways. It's the, I think, I'm not really familiar with what this ordinance is trying to achieve, maybe you could help explain that, but our docks are going to be well managed, we're going to control the access to the docks. Most of the docks will, well, the only availability will be through a reservation system, most of it's touch and go, or it's reserved for water taxis in our own ferry service.
So, Mr. Taco, all the other companies that are traveling currently around the Boston waterways, the taxi shuttles, will they be able to pull in and out of these docks that are now going to be accessible in the City of Everett for the first time?
Only with our permission.
Only with your permission? And is that how that's run in Boston? They have to get approval from the city in Boston? Or they get approval, who do they get approval from in the city of Boston?
Which vessels are you referring to?
So like in Charlestown, at the Charlestown Navy Yard, they have taxi shuttle services that...
Water taxis?
Water taxis, that drop passengers, pick up passengers up on a daily basis.
I'm not sure how the water taxis are licensed, but the docks, some docks are publicly accessible, most docks are private, and so they have to have arrangements on pickup and drop off locations.
Well, we have public docks in the City of Everett, or they're only private docks that are going to be owned and controlled by Encore Boston Harbor?
I believe that there are no public docks in the City of Everett. I believe the only docks would be ours after we open, and I believe Exelon has a dock. Or mobile, I don't know, one of those two, but...
So the only vessels we'll see coming in and out of the City of Everett is Encore, is three vessels that are being created currently?
Well, we're, we have three, and our operator's building a fourth, so we'll have four vessels, and then our dock is available for public use, but it's at our discretion. So we'll have a reservation system, we'll have a system in place so that private vessels can come, dock, touch and go, drop passengers off.
Okay. Do we foresee needing a harbor master to be able to oversee this function? But it sounds like your company is going to be the ones that are going to play the harbor master role, because it's your docks, it's your facility that owns and controls the docks that are coming into the City of Everett.
Yeah, I think we will have a good line of communication with all the relevant agencies, there's a number of them out there. The Coast Guard's right around the corner, the state police marine unit's right around the corner. They're all in attendance. I think it's a, some of the important questions I asked, especially at opening, is, you know, everyone loves to anchor on the Fourth of July and watch the fireworks. I've been told that the river is a no anchoring, no mooring, rafting zone for the entire river, so that's going to be easy to police. It's not like they could just clog the river and look at the wind and open a cooler. As tempting as that would be, there's going to be enough activity out there to sort of keep things moving.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Does the City of Everett own their own boat currently that is owned and operated by the police department? Or is that out of commission now?
It's been out of commission since I've been here, but I think it's premature to think that we would need one, based on what Mr. Taco was saying and the preliminary meetings that they had, where they're going to have full control over who comes and who goes at their own docking system, so there's not much that the city would need to oversee. However, if a need became identified, we certainly revisit it.
So you don't think that we're going to need to have a law enforcement boat owned and operated by our police department? We're opening a new entity of passengers coming in and out.
At this juncture, it doesn't appear so.
There could be a number of things that could happen on the waterways, that could need to have our public safety, even if it's not police, EMT, fire, whatever the case might be, would need to get out onto those waterways for Encore's three, four vessels that they're going to be running back and forth. How would we move our personnel out to the water if an emergency arose?
Well, we wouldn't have that capability at this time, but as Mr. Taco said, we have the Coast Guard, we have the state police marine unit, and the Boston marine unit that are all a stone's throw away.
Okay. I think in the city, I think this is a great piece to put on the books, but I think we need to think about, again, it's not about a police, it's not about, but it's about bringing any first responders out. God forbid there was an emergency on our waterways that we are now licensing to allow vessels to come into the City of Everett for the first time, that we should have access to get our public safety officials out onto the waterways to keep our city secure and safe, for a number of reasons of what could happen if something were to go astray.
We're certainly open to the idea, we're not closing the door on it, but we're just, at this juncture, it's in the preliminary discussion stage, and we feel very secure with the operations that the Encore group has put forth for this docking station.
So what would happen, Mr. Taco, if we had need to bring our public safety personnel out to these waterways? How would we get them out there?
Well, so I think we could take this at a couple pieces. A number of years ago, I actually looked at the different shout ruddles, shout routes, and, you know, there is not much space for us to navigate within City of Everett municipal boundaries. So we're actually, just shortly after we leave our dock, we enter the City of Boston jurisdiction, and we really remain in the City of Boston jurisdiction for the remainder of the journey. The other two stops are within the City of Boston jurisdiction. We're traveling on the Charlestown side of the river to avoid any conflict with the other tankers and the large industry vehicles that will be coming in that way. So I don't think there's going to be much opportunity for our vessels to be hanging out within a City of Everett municipal boundary. Regardless, I don't think that the marine units, the Coast Guard marine units, they, state police marine units necessarily look at municipal boundaries either, and they're all over this area, they are paying a lot of attention. I mean, they've always paid a lot of attention to what happens within the City of Everett, because you have a lot of significant infrastructure that's to be protected, and that they're bringing in a lot of different materials in and out of the harbor that need to be protected. So they're used to working within these waterways, we're working with them so that we can operate cooperatively, and industry can still function, and then we can start moving people through. But I think as a risk, we're probably the lowest risk of any water usage that's happening within the City of Everett at this time.
Okay. I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues. I just hope that the administration will take what I said tonight seriously, and will consider what happens if a private boat were to come and cause some issue to be on Encore's vessels. We are now opening our city up to serious concern by bringing boats to the city for the first time, by having these docks that private boats can use. I hope the administration will take my...
It's an ongoing part of the conversation, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to you, for Councilman Simonelli. It's my understanding that the harbor master is already in place from the Alfred Street Bridge, is that so? That's probably so. So the bigger point, although Councilman McGlaughlin is making good points, is what happens to the boat traffic that needs to go in and out of that with the Alfred Street Bridges? Remember, down the street in Medford, there's a yacht club, and they need to go through that area, and that bridge needs to go up and down. And I do understand that the harbor master has the right at any moment to start the ship or boat, or to raise the bridge or not. And therefore, it's the harbor master that's the police of the waterway. And Everett has had 11 ships a month coming into the city for hundreds, 100 and something years, and there's been major emergencies and whatnot along that river. And it's never been, to my knowledge, that the City of Everett had anything to do it, worrying about or thinking about dangers of people on the water. That was already taken care of by the Coast Guard and other entities. So although Councilman McGlaughlin makes a good point about we need to have safety, EMTs, this and that, to believe that the harbor master is already in control of the waterway, remember, we have the Mayfair Dam there, so the ships and boats need to continue on to Arlington, use that bridge at will. Now, I don't know how they do that, they make a phone call and say, we're coming, but the major concern should really be about that bridge being up and down. What's the times? Do we have a right to know the times? Is there an event where, you know, nine o'clock, the ship's coming, does the bridge go up and people can't get to work? That should be our major focus, not so much on what Encore is doing and what's happening in between that area, between the bridge going towards the Edison, or the bridge going towards Encore. It really doesn't have a play with us, it's the harbor master. So maybe you can enlighten me on that, maybe it's an ongoing thing, or whatever it is.
So regarding the bridge, it's a City of Boston bridge, and City of Boston controls when the bridge goes up and down. I know just from our transportation meeting that they're going to work closely with us, with the Coast Guard, state police marine units, and the bridge operator to control the amount of times that that bridge goes up and down, and make sure both it's passable from the existing marine is up there, but we're also going to work towards alerting folks through the state police marine unit and the Coast Guard marine unit, let folks know that there's no availability for dock space at Encore before they even get this far up the river, so they don't even need to raise the bridge, because there's no point in driving up, because there's no space that's going to be available. So we're talking about several different things. There's also, especially ocean boaters are very used to radio channels, so we'll probably be operating on a specific radio channel. We can let boaters know in the area that something's available, they could call in before they ever even get to the bridge to ask for availability, and we can let them know whether or not there's space available in the dock. There's a number of things you could do to sort of prevent the bridge, prevent any additional impacts to raise that bridge. But, and also, I just want to make clear, everyone knows that the four vessels we're building were built with the intention of being able to go underneath the bridge at any tide. So I think we're doing our best to ensure that that is going to be in good operation. It is a City of Boston bridge, there is no harbor master that I believe, but I'm not sure. I think the harbor's really been policed and patrolled by a combination of City of Boston marine units, state police marine units, and the Coast Guard out of the North End.
I'll say, Counselor? Counselor Napolitano? And then Counselor DePiero?
Thank you. Actually, don't have any comments, questions for...
I'm sorry. Okay. I'll say.
I don't have questions for them, I might do a few statements.
Counselor Hanlon?
I have one question.
Well, they have, I have a list of...
Can I add?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have no questions, I just have some general information that people should know of, okay?
Okay.
Number one, Everett has a harbor master. I don't know if the position is filled or not, but we do have a position of a harbor master. Second, you should know that Everett is a deepwater seaport. We have some of the largest ships in the world that bunk in it at Everett. The line of city property is the middle of the river, after the bridge, the middle of the river. We do have a dock in Everett, it's kind of small. It's right behind, I would say, Target, where Target Store is, maybe a little bit more towards where Costco is, if you look straight out the door, you probably see the dock. It's very small, it was used mostly by our own police boat to have passengers get off and on, that needed to go out at certain times, but that was a dock that we used. I didn't even know if it's still there, because it was rather small. Regarding the bridge going up and down, the boats have the right of way, and they have radio telephones on the boats, they just call the bridge and they say, open up, and there's no time limit, there's no nothing, I mean, time limit for them getting out of the bridge, and then it closes, but they have to open that bridge. It's just like an automobile, they have the right of way of that water, and they will open that bridge up for them. Nothing about any city or anything saying you can only open at eight o'clock, they open it up when they have to. And someone else mentioned the other thing, so we don't have to cover that. But just some information for us, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First of all, excuse the customary thanks again, we have a, you know, I don't have questions for the guests, I do have some comments, because I seriously believe we've gotten off track here. We have in front of us an ordinance to review regarding licensing commercial vehicles. Has nothing to do with harbor master, has nothing to do with the bridge, has nothing to do with Boston Harbor. It has to do with vessels being licensed in the City of Everett. Now, as far as the harbor goes, you know, I concur with Mr. Taco's assumption. The harbor is controlled by the Coast Guard, the state police maritime unit, and the Boston maritime unit. Okay? We don't need to worry about jurisdiction, we don't need to worry about deep water, we don't need to worry about any of that stuff, because they have been managing that aspect of Boston Harbor and the hundreds of ships that come to the City of Everett for years. And for a small time after 9/11, we had a grant for a police boat that used to join them when the harbor was shut down, whenever an LNG tanker came in. Again, none of this has any bearing on licensing commercial passenger vessels. So these are not things to concern. Yes, there's a yacht, there's a yacht club in Medford or Somerville? Yeah, I've heard Somerville. But those facilities have been managing under that Alfred Street Bridge also for years. Again, nothing to be concerned with. The piece before us has to do with licensing vehicles registered in the City of Everett. That's what we should be discussing. And all due respect to our guests, if we're looking, if they're licensing those vehicles with us, then it's inappropriate to have them up here while we're discussing licensing those particular vessels. So in that respect, I would ask, again, as before I started speaking, excuse the customary thanks. We have a piece in front of us regarding our licensing.
Can I make one?
And that's the piece we should be discussing.
Can I make one clarification?
Please.
Based on licensing, I think there may be a jurisdictional issue with licensing, because it's a federal license that we'll get on a vessel of that size, there's longstanding processes in place to do so. And secondly, I'm not sure it would be even applicable to us, because our vessels will be housed out of Boston. So we'll be touching and going in Everett, but their home base will be out of Charlestown.
And that actually is the point I was leading to, because again, for some of you who've not had any direct experience either the Coast Guard or Navy, there are maritime laws, and there is federal jurisdiction, and then to some degree, state jurisdiction. None of these have any bearing on their commercial vehicles, their vessels, rather. They're specifically designed, they're going to be home ported out of the Encore Resort or somewhere else?
They're actually being manufactured in Charlestown, and the manufacturer is, and the boat operator's going to maintain them and house them offsite.
So these are vessels that are not even going to be through the City of Everett. They'll be utilizing it. So again, let's excuse these gentlemen, and let's get on track of what this ordinance is about, and what the intent of it is. And if the intent is to have, you know, private captains go ahead and license their vessels here in Everett, they need to have someplace to dock them. We don't have dock slips here in Everett. So I'm interested, more interested in where we're going with this piece, and what its intention and what its purpose is, than I am in hearing what's going on with Encore, because they'll manage the public traffic. Water taxis, they'll authorize the companies that they feel are going to augment their business, and they'll deny the companies that they feel are not going to present a good image. So we don't need to worry about managing any of that. Let's get back on track. We have an ordinance in front of us. What's the purpose? What's the general idea? Who does it affect? How do we enforce it? Those are my questions. I'll give the floor back.
I'll say, Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I do have a little experience with maritime activity. I was in the merchant marines, I worked on oil tankers in the late 70s, and I do have knowledge. So my concern is that bridge, okay? If you don't think that licensing big boats that are going to go under that, they have designed boats that go under the bridge, which is great, but has anybody ever been at the bridge and seen a very small boat, almost a rowboat going by and the bridge went up, and you say, I waited 15 minutes for that little minnow boat to go by? It's very disappointing, let me tell you. And everybody here has seen that, and you say, is that the boat that I waited for for half an hour that I'm late? Because that guy, and this happens all the time, now, this might sound, it's something we have to take in consideration. I think we need to invite the Boston harbor master to one of our meetings. I'm going to vote in favor of this, because we do have to license sometimes, some type of vessel service here to the waterway, but we have to look at the big picture of that bridge. You know, the people of this city and everywhere else around it, because they put the wrong bolts in, you know, it's been a down, cut down a one lane, took six years to fix it to begin with, and they found gas pipes underneath, oh, what a nightmare that thing is. I don't want any more excuses with that bridge. I was told that the bridge automatically, some guy in Boston looks in a camera and lifts the bridge. There's nobody in that tower there. This is what I've been told in the past, I don't know if that's true or not, but we've got to get some information on this, on that... But we've got to get some information on this, on that office tower thing that's on the bridge. Anybody else here... Maybe I'm wrong, Mr. President, but I was told that it's operated by somebody outside of that tower. I've never seen anybody in it.
I don't know. I don't know if anybody's in there.
There is somebody... Councilman Hanlon said there is somebody in there. I was told that there wasn't. So, I want to know some stories on the Alfred Street Bridge, and I'm going to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, because I think that's what a roadblock is on a lot of this boating issue here at that bridge. There's, like was mentioned, there's two or three yacht clubs on that side, the Encore side, and not to mention all the people that visit that Assembly Mall. So, I think it's something we have to look at. But I'm going to vote for this. I did watch the committee meeting, so I have a little understanding of it. And my experiences in the late seventies was working on oil tankers, which were much bigger and a different type of operation. But for that bridge to be lifted for a small boat, whenever somebody feels like calling, "Hey, Harbor Master, we're ready to go under." I can just imagine a train of boats going under, how long that would take. Needless to say, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I am going to sponsor a resolution for our next meeting, inviting the Boston Harbor Master, who is ever in charge of that Alfred Street Bridge, to be here and answer some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Marchese.
Yes, this has been in committee, right?
Yes, it has.
And it's come out favorable action?
Yes, it has.
I'd like to make a motion, favorable action on this right now if there's no other questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll call.
As amended.
Fable action.
Fable action. As amended.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Marchese.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have enrolled the ordinance.
Clerk, can you read item thirteen?
Item number thirteen is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne Matuski and Counsel Stephen Siminelli that vetoes auto repair, correct its operation. This was reported to hold it over in committee for a meeting March eleventh. It's a no action necessary.
Counsel Matuski.
Do you agree?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have received a letter from a woman on Bill Arrav.
Yep. We discussed it in committee tonight.
Oh, you did? Tonight you had it in committee?
Right before.
So, I just want to know, has there been improvements?
Yes. There has been some improvements. They are still in litigation, and they have a hearing this week, this Thursday. So, the committee decided to hold off for a few more weeks to see if there's a resolution that comes from litigation.
All right. So, the people in that neighborhood are getting some... And the business owners doing the right thing for change.
It's improving.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counsel Fl... I'll say, Consular? Okay.
You suspend, we'll take item twenty-one, please.
Yes. Item number twenty-one.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can you read it?
Mr. President, item twenty-one is a resolution offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, Fred Capone, and Rosa DeFlorio that the city of Everett look into the feasibility of starting an internship program for all departments and to reach out to colleges and trade schools in the area to tap into the talent pool they may have.
We're waiting for an answer from the Chief of Staff, and I know he's here. That's the reason why I went out of order. So, if we could please have the Chief of Staff.
Executive, all in favor for Chief of Staff?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Counsel Florio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. Don, I believe the last time you were here, if I remember correctly, you told us to hold it over, and you were going to come up with some answers in regards to interns.
Yes. We...
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
Yes.
And President Dela Sola.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have ordained the ordinance.
Can you read number fifteen on the agenda, please?
Item number fifteen is a resolution, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin that the administration give an immediate response to the idea of a twenty-four-hour parking sticker enforcement for Ward One and Ward Six due to casino patrons possibly taking up presidential parking spots in these specific wards.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, can I make a motion and invite up Kevin O'Donnell, may Chief of Staff?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. O'Donnell, thank you for appearing this evening. Can you give an update on the administration's take on this and where we have gone since I introduced this, I think, a month ago?
Yes, we've been having discussions on it, and we actually have a meeting scheduled with the Chief of Police and Traffic Coordinator, Jay Barti and Sergeant Gaff, Monday, next Monday. The only reason we couldn't do it this week is because Sergeant Gaff is at mandatory supervisory training, being duly promoted. So, we had hoped to have something earlier, but, you know, that held precedence. Couple of options we're discussing because of this concerns with how it may affect businesses and things of that nature is a program similar to Boston of maybe two-hour meters. But the two-hour meters program in Boston is a program where you cannot feed the meter every two hours. You get marked, and you have to move. So, we're just discussing more of those options, but I'm sure we'll have some more rock-solid answers by the next meeting.
My question, Mr. President, to my colleagues, maybe, is an idea, take suggestion, but should we refer this into a committee which would give us a faster response from the administration if they're meeting next Monday? We could get a faster response, and they can get out of committee for our next meeting if that's a possibility to have happened. Because I think this is a time-sensitive matter. I think we need to work on this immediately and get something on the books. Every two weeks that goes by is two weeks closer to June twenty-fourth of the opening of the casino. So, I'd like to see my colleagues' thought on that. Maybe we send this to committee and hopefully have an in-and-out of committee before the next council meeting so that we can actually work on this and get something moving before it's too late.
If I may, it's been a continuous discussion since it first became up, so it's not like we're pushing, kicking the can down the road, Counsel. We're making every attempt. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of businesses and citizens that will be affected. We want to make sure that we have it right, that we have all the experts in the room that know a lot more about it than I.
Oh, Mr. O'Donnell, I totally agree with you, and I know that the administration has been taking this seriously. I talked to the mayor about it. I'm not saying that whatsoever. I'm just saying for you to have the opportunity to get it back to us and be able to give us the suggestions, because Sergeant Gaff had to go to training, and obviously that takes precedent, no way was I trying to say that you're kicking this down the road. I know that you take it serious.
I understand.
I'm just saying that if it gives us an opportunity to be able to bring your suggestions before us sooner and be able to get something on the books and something moving forward, it might be a faster track to be able to get going, to work collaboratively together, because I think everybody understands the magnitude of what's going to happen in this community in a very short amount of time, with probably a hundred thousand cars coming into the city of Everett mid of June. We need to really think about this, and I know that the administration is taking it serious.
It has to be... We all agreed, we're all in agreement that it has to be in place before that happens, well before that happens.
And that's all I was just saying, was this a faster track to be able to move this along, to be able to get this going? And I yield the floor to my colleagues at this time.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And then Counsel Hanlon.
I was, based on what you said, two-hours meters, I was just going to come up with... That's going to hurt the business people, because you go to a Bundanza on Main Street, for example. First of all, I think this should be citywide, okay? I believe this should be citywide. But at the same time, we can't hurt the businesses. So, I understand we're doing this because of the casino, but we can't revolve our whole life around the casino. So, let's be careful in what we do with the business people, because not everybody has parking lots. On Main Street and Ferry Street, there are no parking lots. On Norwood Street, every square year, there are. So, if you decide you want to go to Bundazas with your friends and you want to spend three hours there, now you're telling me after two hours, you're going to go move the car? So, my thinking is make sure the business people get special permits where they can give their people if they come in. You know what I'm saying? There's ways to work around it, and I know this... You know, I understand everything is in a hurry, and I understand we have to move fast on things, but let's do it right. Why do things ten times in the city? So, let's come together, even if we have to spend five hours in the committee. Let's spend together, throw things out there, see what other cities and towns do, okay? But sometimes you can't go by other cities and towns. You can't go by Malden, they have a thousand parking garages. You can't go by Somerville, they have parking garages. You can't go by Boston, they have parking garages. We don't have them.
No, that's why we have to make sure we factor it as much we can.
So, we have to be careful in what we do and how it affects the business people in the city. So, my recommendation is let's look at all the business people, and if a restaurant seats thirty people, thirty tables, we give them thirty parking slips. People come in, they give them the parking, things to put on their cars. Now, you don't have to... You know, then you put the meters, that's fine, but let's be careful in how we do this. Yes, we do need to get it done, but let's get it done right.
Yeah, we can't take away from one to give to another.
But I do believe the whole city should be done, because what's going to happen is, you know, people say, "Oh, you think they're going to walk that far away?" They're not going to walk that far away. People might come from wherever, Linfield or Peabody, they might park in Woodlawn and take an Uber that only costs five dollars.
Right. No, that's a major concern. Absolutely.
Right. So, they are going to park all over the city. I don't care what anybody says. So, let's do it citywide, let's do it right, and let, you know, look into Somerville. I know in Somerville, when I go visit my friends there, they come out with the parking ticket that you put on your car, and I tell you, when I'm leaving, they chase after me to make sure I give it back to them, because if they get a second one, they have to pay two-hundred fifty dollars. So, they're very careful in how they give those out. So, that's...
Yeah, I believe Mr. Barti has that information coming in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Before I get to Counsel Hanlon, from what I understand, we have no jurisdiction. I know we're all concerned about the parking, don't get me wrong, but this goes to Traffic Commission, has a jurisdiction. It should go to Traffic Commission. We could recommend it and see, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we could... I got two more speakers, but I'm just throwing that out there, that Traffic Commission... Now, I said that, Counsel Hanlon and Counsel Napolitano still want to speak.
Thank you. Just, I want to know if you've taken this up at your meetings, because that's what we're counting on, and if you haven't, would you, okay? And that is, I wanted to know what we're doing for parking for people that are going in that particular area that are not going to visit the resort at all. What do they do? I mean, a stranger comes from Linfield to go down somewhere in that area, and they're not interested in the resort at all, but they want to go somewhere down there, and they're from Linfield, wherever they're from, Gloucester, I don't care. How are they going to park? Are we going to have some signs or something to tell people that you can't visit Everett? I don't mean that facetiously, you know?
No, I understand. I mean, I don't know that we could, I mean, restrict that like totally, because people have relatives in the area or friends who own businesses in the area. I mean, you know, it doesn't have to just be like a restaurant to visit. I mean, I go visit friends that are, you know, own a mechanic shop once in a while. I'll go have a cup of coffee and things like that, so...
Ward Six goes all the way up to the Malden line on Main Street, and that's about roughly two miles from there to the resort. And, you know, I have four children that own cars that come and visit us quite often. I don't have driveway for one car, and mine goes in there, you know? But so, I don't know where they're going to park if they have to do that, you know? Are we going to have every single street in Everett covered?
Well, those are all part of the discussions that we're weighing out now, Counsel, and I know Sergeant Gaff is very much into it with...
And then the same thing, and that's all, the same thing would apply to Ward Two if we do that, unless we're going to do the whole city, you know, as Rosa says. But Ward Two would have the same problem, people that have no interest in the resort at all, but want to visit their relatives or something, or go to a business or wherever. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Napolitano.
Thank you.
And then Counsel Capone.
Thank you for coming up this evening. I'll be honest, my first reaction was that, when you'd said that there was still more, another meeting coming up, my first reaction was that, you know, here we've lost another month, and we're another month closer to opening. On the other hand, that was my first reaction as I listened and heard things. I know this is not a quick... There's no quick fix here. There's a lot of things that can need to be taken into consideration. And again, as long as something is in place, I would say by no later than May, when the casino opens in June, we'll be prepared for this. I'm not looking for you to report back to us in the next two weeks or a week, because I don't think you're going to have information in a week or two weeks. It's too big a undertaking. And I do realize too, any needs to go through traffic. What I would suggest is that, through the President, that at least two members of the City Council be invited to attend these meetings. At least they can report back to us and know what's going on, and there's a sense of... It'll give us some idea of the magnitude of a project like this. We all have concerns, and we know people are going to park wherever the hell they want to park to get to this casino, and they'll find some other way to park farther enough away that they're not paying for parking and that either a bus trip or an Uber or a Lyft would make it economical. And that'll be at the expense of our neighborhoods, okay? So, I'm of a mind to postpone this another month, but with the understanding that the meetings that you're having are going to continue and that there will be something coming up. And I would ask that we get a formal report on what has been, as what has been developed. But I would ask that some representation from this body be included, because whatever you decide, our collective residents are the ones who are going to come to us. You know, it's nice to think that, yes, they go to the mayor, or they call the mayor's office.
Oh, no, I fully...
But we're the ones that they bump into in church, in Walgreens, Dunkin' Donuts, on the street. What's going on with this? Why isn't this happening? Why is this taking so long? And until you come up here and give us an update, we're collectively, eleven of us, in the dark. And it's been a month. This was on the last meeting of January. I wasn't here for the first meeting of February, because I was at the Encore in Las Vegas, but the, you know, visiting there. But nothing... I know there was nothing reported on that agenda. I read, I watched the meeting, I know what was conducted. So, we don't get the feeling that time is ticking by and nothing's being resolved. I would ask that, you bring this back to the mayor, to consider that through their President, that at least two of our membership be appointed to join in. If for nothing more, I mean, we're obviously, we have some feedback as residents. We're not going to be voting and deciding, but at least so we can report back to this body and know what's going on.
Oh, no. We're open to all ideas and suggestions, because it is a complex issue, where we want to, you know, do, you know, come up with the right decision that has a minimal impact on the businesses and the residents.
Mr. President, when we've dismissed our guest, I have two motions I'd like to make on this piece.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Chief of Staff.
Good evening. I know that when you were here last, it was yourself, the mayor, and Sergeant Gaff, understand the magnitude of this, and we're all trying to get ahead of this before it becomes a big problem. And at the time, uh, each of you mentioned that you understand the considerations that have to be built in here, in terms of businesses that are operating, people who are coming to visit, their friends who live in the city. So these are all things that we need to do. And I know you understand that. And I think it's important that we're looking at the area down there that's impacted the most. But it has been mentioned here by some of my colleagues, it's not gonna be limited to that. And I understand that's what adds to part of the problem. I mean, this day, we talked about it in the last meeting, I see people parking their cars, dropping, jumping on the bus to go into Boston. It's happening throughout this entire city.
Yes.
So, it's, uh, it would be nice to say, yeah, this one little problem to kinda unfold. But while we're doing it, and I think the suggestion of a couple of members to be there for feedback and, uh, input in education for the body is an excellent one. And I'll support that, uh, and I appreciate the, um, the interest in that from you. Uh, but as we're doing this, I, I wanna make sure that, and I know that you're doing it, and I know that Sergeant Gaff is looking at it as well. While we're looking at this particular situation, at the same time, trying to find something for the citywide program that we've all collectively been talking about for a long time. So I just don't want to get lost in this, that, you know, this is also something that's gonna impact the rest of the community, and is currently doing it. So we really need to find something that's gonna take care of everyone. I know that adds to it.
Agreed. No, but that's just the fact of the matter. Yeah, that's the reality of the situation. And there is a certain sense of urgency to it, if you will, because as Councilor Napolitano said, we, we can't finally come up with a plan and then June 15th say, alright, here it is. I mean, we, we need to educate, you know, not just our own citizens, but, you know, the hundreds of thousands of people that are gonna be looking to come down this way. You know, 'cause, um, we wanna avoid, you know, them just assuming they can do what they want. You know, we wanna do the best we can to get the message out there that there's new rules in place, you know, with concerns to parking.
So, so I know there's a lot of, a lot of issues going in there. Um, and as long as we just keep making progress, that's all we can, that's all we can ask for.
Absolutely.
But I, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna support the motion, my colleague, 'cause a couple of members there, I think, would help to bring some additional insight. And it would also help to bring the information back to the council, so that we don't have to keep bringing...
Yeah, so we're not waiting every week, or two weeks, and, uh, yeah, nothing lost in translation.
I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. President.
No more questions, I'll go back to Councilor McGlaughlin.
Mr. O'Donnell. I know that we've just recently changed Sergeant Gaff, uh, from Sergeant Hannon. What, what meetings have occurred previous to Sergeant Gaff on this matter? Because as some of my colleagues alluded to, that this has been kicked around for a long time. I don't necessarily remember this being a topic of conversation in most recent. But I'm just wondering if the conversations are finally now started since the past month, or if these conversations have been going on for the past several years. And if they are, what meetings have we had to bring us to date where we are today? If there's any suggestions already on the table from Sergeant Hannon and other members of the traffic that have worked on this?
Um, I couldn't speak for anything. I mean, I know in the past Sergeant Hannon and I have, um, kinda had off the cuff discussions about potential, um, twenty-four hour parking citywide. Uh, but it really wasn't, uh, had, didn't have anything to do with the casino. It was more because some of the other problems that Councilor Capone identified. We did, we are noticing, uh, some people that are coming in. They're parking on side streets, particularly along Broadway because of the bus lane. They're leaving the car there, and they're going into Boston for eight to ten hours and stuff like that. So those are things that have been bantered back and forth, you know, about, um, with respect to, um, twenty-four hour parking citywide. But the, you know, the real, uh, meat and potatoes discussions about all of this now with relation to the casinos have only been over the past few months.
Okay, so will Monday's meeting be the first real meat and potatoes meeting that will have freak out in this matter?
No, they, they've been having, uh, their old meetings with the, the, uh, with transportation staff and team as well, prior to, prior to West meeting. And so we've already spoken, spoken a few times amongst ourselves. And then, um, the chief brought up, uh, the possibility of the two-hour meetings and things like that. So that's where we're really gonna get down to the nitty-gritty this, this Monday. And I, I think we're, we're gonna be, uh, be further along in the process than...
I'm just wondering if there's a base to start with on Monday, when this meeting, you know, comes together. Will there be a base that has already been created, or is this coming from scratch in the past month, the conversation?
No, we, I, I guess it's fair to say that there's somewhat of a baseline that we know we're working off of. And, and, you know, we just gotta fine tune a lot of things right now.
Could you give us the baseline in email this week to just bring us, as my colleague said, at least bring us up to date of where the base is starting, so that we can at least be in tune to get, answering questions to residents? Because we get asked every day. And all due respect, the Traffic Commission, they're good people. They don't get asked questions like the mayor does and my colleagues here on the City Council do, by residents. They don't know who's in the Traffic Commission. So to ask a member of the Traffic Commission is never going to happen by a resident. The resident's gonna ask us as a collective body and ask the mayor. We're the ones that get an ask daily about this issue. So if you could maybe this week, send us an email of the baseline of where this meeting is going to take off from on Monday, I would appreciate just understanding where the base is, or what the collaborative ideas are, so that what will be grown off of that on Monday? Because I do think time sensitive matter, so that we can start to answer questions. I'm sure, again, the mayor gets a lot of these questions daily, so don't...
Yeah, it's becoming a regular topic of discussion.
It is. So if you could send that to us in an email, so that we at least have a baseline of where this conversation's gonna start on Monday, Monday, and continue to grow, I would appreciate that email.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Councilor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just a quick question. The Wynn, I believe, has over three thousand parking spaces, you know, on their property, and another six hundred coming across the road.
Yes.
And, um, the, uh, I was wondering, have they established a parking fee?
No, um, they're gonna lease that property to the city.
That's the one across the street?
Across the street from their, their establishment, yes.
So what about theirs?
In their, their one down on River Green, um, I, I'd have to...
Well, that's for employees, right?
No, no, that's gonna, initially it was going to be, and then they changed it to, to it's open to the public, and they're gonna, they're gonna staff that themselves.
Okay, so we have no idea what it would cost? Because I'm thinking, you know, if somebody wanted to park in the high school, the old high school, and they want to call an Uber, you know, that's gonna cost ten bucks. Uh, average, wherever they are in Everett. And is, would it be worth it just to drive down to park for eight dollars, or nine dollars, or four dollars, whatever the cost is gonna be, rather than taking Uber?
I would think so, because they're gonna have a shuttle service as well, and in the good weather, you can walk along the bike path, so...
Well, I was thinking, though, if the, if the parking is gonna be sixteen dollars, then that would mean a lot for someone to think about walking or taking a bus or something. But it was, if it was more reasonable, they might wanna park down at the, at the resort. Okay, that's all, thank you.
I'll say, Councilor?
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilor Napolitano had a motion.
Thank you. Unless there's any further questions for the Chief of Staff, excuse the customary thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, I have, as I stated, I have two motions. First motion is to hold this, to postpone this until the, uh, the second meeting of March. The second motion is to, uh, is to, uh, appoint two members of the City Council to attend these meetings, to be able to provide feedback to the council.
The meetings?
The meetings regarding, with the administration regarding the, uh, the parking.
Okay. That's your one.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I'll second the second motion. I believe that people, the, the two, like, Councilors Ward One and Six, who's gonna affect, should probably be appointed to it.
It's their, their wards.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll go with, the first motion was to hold it off for two weeks of March, correct?
We're gonna do...
Second meeting of March. And they've already stated that this is not something they're gonna have a quick answer for.
Exactly.
They meet, uh, next week, they're gonna come back the first week of March, what are they gonna tell us? They have, the, the meeting is still, is still determining how to approach this. So at this point, there really isn't anything concrete.
Was the motion a point? Was the motion a point?
Give them, give them a, a, a point, give them a month to work on this. And in that process, have two of our members involved in the process.
That's the one we, that's the motion we approved, right?
Right. That's what we're, that's what the motion's...
So...
The, the motion is to postpone by, and to, at the same time, send two members to meet with the administration for what's...
Until there's something, come back to us.
Until something come back.
Sure.
The postponement is for them to re, to inform us, not, not to make a decision, obviously.
Yeah.
They're making the decision, we have no control over that. Uh, but by, by reporting, giving them a month to report back to us...
As I stated.
It gives us an opportunity to insert our membership into the process.
Oh, was it, so it'll be all in favor?
And that was, that was seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it?
Mitch, can I just spend the rules here one second? And just, uh, Article seventeen and eighteen, with Councilor McKinnon. He, he wanted them laid on the table, 'cause he's not here to discuss them. If we could, uh, motion to lay those on the table for two weeks, next meeting? Seventeen, eighteen, yeah, both of them with Leo.
Yep, I agree, I do legally have to read them still.
Okay, yep, right.
So if he, if you ask me to read them, I'll read them, we'll take them collectively and postpone them collectively.
Sure. Then ask, read them, take them both collectively, or postpone them for next week.
All in favor to read seventeen and eighteen? All opposed, the ayes have it?
Mr. President, uh, item seventeen, eighteen. Seventeen is a resolution offered by Councilor John Lee McKinnon that the Traffic Department place a no-hobby truck inside on buttons of Ave at the request of residents. And eighteen is the Senator DiDomenico and Representative McGonigal will update the City Council on medical cameras in ICU for patients entering ICU after serious complications after medical issue.
Okay.
The motion was to postpone for two weeks.
Motion to, uh, refer, um, postpone for two weeks.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
Motion to take item twenty off the calendar, if we could.
All in favor, take number twenty? All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number twenty, please?
Item number twenty. The President is an ordinance offered by Councilor Michael Marchese and Councilor Fred Capone to amend section ten dash twenty-seven inspection request before occupancy of Article Three Certificate of Habitability. And I believe this is up for ordainment.
Second?
You ready? Well, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon? Councilor Mc, um, Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski? Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
No.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Eight yeas, one nay, you have so ordained.
Motion to, um...
Item number sixteen would be the other one that...
Can you read number sixteen, please?
Item number six...
Can we, um, a motion of reconsideration on that, on item number twenty?
Second motion.
For reconsideration, Councilor Capone?
No.
Councilor DeFlorio?
No.
Councilor DePiero?
Nope.
Councilor Hanlon?
Nope.
Councilor Marchese?
No.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
No.
Councilor Napolitano?
No.
Councilor Simonelli?
No.
And President Delisola?
No.
Nine yeas, zero, uh, nays, reconsideration has failed. Zero, uh, sorry. Zero yeas, nine nays. I read that wrong. Reconsideration has failed. What's the, um, next one? Item number sixteen. The President is a ordinance offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President to amend chapter twelve of the revised ordinances to add short-term rentals.
Favorable action.
Second?
This is for ordainment.
All in favor?
Oh, or...
Hold on, sorry.
Almost. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
That would be ten yeas, zero nays, you have so ordained the ordinance.
Clerk, can you read number nineteen on the agenda, please?
Yes. Item nineteen. The President is a resolution offered by Councilor Fred Capone that a representative from Community Development appears to discuss the end date of the line bike program, the information collected, and when all bikes will be removed from public sidewalks.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do believe that they had provided that, and, uh, there's really no need for this to hang out any longer. As far as the bike program goes, it's green, it's getting cars off the road, uh, it's exercise, it's all good stuff. Uh, my concern has always been along that we just need a little more structure, a little more order, how these bikes are placed, because they are working in inconvenience to some of the members of our community. Folks that have any kind of a physical disability are finding it hard to be able to get around them if they're left in the middle of a crosswalk, in the middle of a sidewalk, they're left on people's private property. That's the kind of stuff that we have to do. And for all the good that comes from the program, and it does, we can't lose sight of the fact that this is a for-profit business. The report that was given back to us is that there were thirty-five thousand bike trips. That's thirty-five thousand dollars. And we're letting a business operate on our public sidewalk, making a profit, and they're kinda leaving roadblocks all over the place. They're making it inconvenient for some of our residents. So we need to kinda fine tune that a little bit. And, uh, my concern is I just wanted to make sure that Community Development and the administration had this council involved before they enter another agreement, so that we could just kinda fine tune some of those issues. And I think, unfortunately, I think we lost an opportunity with these thirty-five thousand trips. Um, there's also baskets that get advertisements, so there's additional revenues that are being gained. The trip right now is a dollar, I don't see it staying a dollar forever. At some point, it's going to increase. And the lost opportunity, I think, is that we, as a, as a community, could've had ten percent of that trip fee, uh, to go into the city's coffers, not for taxes, not to raise revenue. We could've used that for public good. We could've used that to feed the homeless, the mittens and hat drive that we do out of the clerk's office, the Toys for Tots at Christmas time, Thanksgiving turkeys for the needy. That was thirty-five hundred dollars that we lost. I wanna make sure we don't lose that in the future. So I just wanna refer this to the Community Development Office and to the mayor's office, and just ask that, before they enter into any new agreements, to keep the council involved, and let's fine tune those items, make sure we don't lose that opportunity again. So I just wanna refer it out to those departments.
Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Can you read number twenty-two on the agenda, please?
Item number twenty-two, under new business. The President is an order offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola as President to allow the consumption of beer and wine at the Connolly Center on Friday, March fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for the City of Everett and the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick's event.
Favorable action?
Second.
Under, Councilor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, I, I actually have a couple of questions regarding this, and I see that the administration just walked out of the chambers.
I'm right here to answer questions. I'm also here to answer questions for this, I was part of the meeting.
Great. I think this is a great event that we all get to enjoy and have fun after this evening. But this year, I've noticed that they've actually listed the City of Everett as partner of this event. And I think that brings the City of Everett's liability and their concern to a greater height. If we're going to allow a private entity to have a fundraiser for our schools or for any, any particular reason, great. But to list the City of Everett as additional partner to this event, I think that we should talk about what is the City of Everett offering to this event to allow them to become a partner of this? Are we giving them rental costs break on the Connolly Center? Are we supplying staff members to be able to have this event? I don't want to hurt this event, because, again, I enjoy going to the event, it's a good event. My only concern is if we're going to allow Friendly Sons a break or a discount or so forth, are we going to allow that across the board to anybody that wants to rent public space in our city, Pop Warner, or anyone else? Uh, and, and again, this year, I, I noticed that they've listed the City of Everett as an entity versus other years, it has not happened.
Yeah, la, last year in the order, it did say, it was written, I wrote it the exact same way. I actually just usually copy it from the year prior and change the date.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Clark, on this invitation that's actually on social media and is in...
So I, I think to make the, the, I believe the city is trying to boost it a little bit. The money all goes back to the school department, if I'm not mistaken, both to the band and to the culinary program, I believe, of the two programs. Um, I don't know if there is a fee reduction, that I can't tell you. Um, I do know that the city's always had some involvement, maybe not on the ticket prior. Um, this is probably a little bit new. Um, but I think it's to try to boost the attendance and raise more money for the schools, which are in need. So I, I, that, that was the, the gist of it that I understood from the, the only meeting that I went to.
And I fully support that, and I fully plan on attending the event, and I fully, I'm sure most of my colleagues will. But the fact that the, the City of Everett this year is listed as a partner in this event. I know that years past, it was just individuals were listed as a host committee, if you wanna call it, or whatever the case might be. The fact that the City of Everett is listed this year for the first year as part of the host committee for this event, what does that entail for the City of Everett involvement into this event? It's obviously more of a, more involvement this year. That's my question of this year versus other years.
What's the difference?
So what's the difference? Why is the City of Everett this year listed as a part of the host community, committee, if you want to, versus years past?
I'm not a hundred percent. Um, I, I think it's just to try to generate some more, uh, revenue that goes back to the schools. I mean, every dollar that they raise, except for the money that pays for the food, goes back to the, um, school system. So there, last year, maybe there was three hundred and change in attendance. I think they're trying to make it five hundred, where you can raise now maybe fifteen thousand dollars I think they're trying to make it 500, where you can raise now maybe $15,000, and it goes back to the school instead of five or six.
And I think the committee in years past has done a great job, and I've enjoyed going. I think they've done a great job. My only thought was, when I saw that the City of Everett was listed, does that give us any liability into this?
No, it's all the same insurances, the same coverages. The sponsor of the event, Mr. McGonigal is the main sponsor. He's getting the liquor license like he always does every year. We're the beginning part of that liquor license program. So you have to pass it, then it gets sent to Mr. McGonigal to say the city has approved me to have a license here, you know, at the Connolly Center, and then he can get the liquor license from the licensing board, through Mr. Antonelli and them and the licensing board. That's the procedure they've done since I've been here. So these are just the steps we take. I don't fully know everything with the, why the Everett, City of Everett is listed, but I do know that there's more involvement, and they're trying to raise more money. So I would probably have to yield to Mr. O'Donnell, who would have known maybe a little more than me, but that's generally what I, the gist that I understood.
And it's okay, and I'm fully ready to vote in support of this. I just was wondering what the reason this year versus years past was, and if there meant any additional liability to our city. But I vote for your favor.
Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Officially or not, the city has always been a partner with this event over the last few years. It's no different than Village Fest in terms of the license itself. The city's a big sponsor of that, and there's no issues there in terms of liability and that aspect of it. I would call for the question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Seconded. Seconded. Call for the question. She seconded.
Yeah, I mean, he's more than welcome to withdraw that if he'd like to ask, have you ask a question.
Well, Counsel, if you want to make a statement, there's another counsel ahead of you to speak, if you wanted to speak. But he called for the question, and she seconded.
I'll withdraw my motion. But I ask my colleagues to make it brief, please.
Counsel DeFlorio was ahead of you. You're all set? Okay. Counsel Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, years ago, the Armory of the Connolly Center now is referred to, when Mayor Connolly was inaugurated, they had various refreshment stands in each corner, serving beer and wine. It was all done respectably. There was no trouble. As Councilman DePiero brought up, the Village Festival, City of Everett is a sponsor. Unfortunately, that room, that Connolly Center holds about 500 people. And, you know, it takes, to get that many people involved in anything today takes a little bit of work. And, you know, we know Mr. Kinnane passed away, he was the facilitator of this over the years, and Representative McGonigal, but, you know, you need all the help you can get to fill a room up and to do it right. But needless to say, you know, we've got five or six breweries in the city, and every article I read, you know, about restaurant, I got the Yankee Magazine delivered today, and it's usually about the, you know, Maine and Vermont and so forth, but they were talking about the breweries in Everett. The Idle Hand Brewery and the Nightship. These people should be going over there as a courtesy, but they got to make money too, you understand? But, you know, we are a whole different, this is a whole different thing going on with the breweries happening here. So, you know, we have to look at that, too. And the casino, everything we do now, you know, we can't have a beer and wine license, but we're three, a couple of blocks away from a $3 billion casino, realistically. And we've never had any issues with the insurance part of it, you know. You have to look at, and I know the councilman's intentions are good, but you have to look at the big scheme of things for the greater good of the city. And there were some events there that didn't have beer and wine, you know, and people came from all over the place for these inaugurations. Hello, Kool-Aid? I don't think so. You know, so let's get real, Everett is a different planet now. And I hope this is a big success for the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick's, and I'm going to vote in favor of this. I know they put a good show on, and I wish them luck, and, but we really got to start, and I know the Count, like, as I said, his intentions are very positive, but it's good that the City of Everett takes some initiative on this, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to wear your green. Counsel Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very quickly. March 15 is the date of the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick's event. Our next meeting is March 11. There's just no time that we could really discuss this intelligently. So I would like to postpone this, because I think it's a good idea, but I'd like to postpone it until October of 2019. That'll give us, before the next event, we can discuss it and get something done with it.
Second motion.
If you postpone it, they can't have the beer and wine at the license.
Counsel.
They have the license anyway.
No, they need this approval.
It's a special license for that one night, Counsel.
If they don't get this approval, they, yeah.
If we don't approve, they'll be selling Kool-Aid.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to come before us first.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Favorable action.
Roll call.
Roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.